Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, November 19th, 2018. First, I need to check with the board, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Oh. Approval of minutes. There were minutes circulated for October 25th and November 5th. We'll pull up, October 25th was a special meeting just to pay bills. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art, seconded by Joe. Any discussion, additions or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes for October 25th as circulated, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Abstaining.
Okay, so, three in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Okay, so that motion passes, 3-0-1. Thank you, Tony. And minutes for our last meeting on November 5th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any additions, corrections, discussion on the minutes for November 5th? All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstaining? So the minutes for November 5th are approved, 4-0-0. Warrants. I have check warrant number 13 in the amount of $175,254.05.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Major items on this one. $1,600 to Artistic Cemetery Memorials, I presume that is the cleaning that...
It was the cleaning, the 100, the tombstones.
$7,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield. $1,500 to Bennington County Sheriff. $1,800 to Business Card Services.
That's a number of varied things, from forklifts, for tractor, to the new signs we bought for the elections, the signs we put out, and the horn, to replace the old ones, about $600, for election day.
$1,800 to Goldstone Architecture.
It's just the garage.
$6,000 to Howard P. Fairfield.
That's the rental of the tractor, the mower.
$2,100 and $2,900 to Morse Repair.
Just truck repairs.
$1,400 to North Trax Equipment.
That's the Greater, I believe, the Greater.
The, it's what?
The Greater.
The Greater, John Dear.
John Dear Greater.
Repairs.
Repairs, okay, okay. $3,100 to Peoples United.
Well, that's the one I mentioned, she just left. Melanie, Melanie, the $3,100 to Peoples United, what payment was that?
$3,117.
I'm sorry, $3,100?
$3,117, yeah, we're just trying to remember what that was for.
I think that was something weird with a tax payment, I'd have to look into it, I don't know.
Okay. $2,400 to QCQA Labs.
That's Art Testing Company for all the patch and another soil test that we actually...
Garage stuff, yep. $120,000 to Russell Construction. $3,300 to Sycamore Landscaping. $7,700 to TAM. $1,200 to West Mountain Traffic Control. $2,000...
Oh, that's all these, brother, probably.
East Road, yep.
They've paid back.
And $2,000 to William E. Daley. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 13 in the amount of $175,254.05, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstaining? So check warrant number 13 is approved by a vote of 4-0-0. And next I have payroll warrant number nine in the amount of $19,998.74.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number nine, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So payroll warrant number nine in the amount of $19,998.74 is approved, 4-0-0. All right, any announcements?
Christmas tree lighting.
Christmas tree lighting is...
December?
December 2nd.
2nd?
At 4:00.
4:00.
December 2nd at 4:00, very good.
And Santa Claus, we put him on, put him on notice, so...
So, he will be there. He's never let us down.
Yep.
Any public comments? Treasures report. Melanie Dexter, welcome.
Hello. So I've got three things up there. You could bring up the, actually the October one, because last, last time I had, I had omitted, I had not updated the amount of the garage bond, and I want to make sure that I corrected that mistake. So if you go down to the bottom half, you can see the garage bond is right around $700,000. That's, that means we're spending it down nice. The last time I had it, it was an old number.
Very good.
So I just wanted to let that out. And you can see we're spending ahead of budget versus last year a little bit, but, but that's practically, that could be anything.
Right.
Okay, so if we could look at November now, there was one number I wanted to bring to your attention and talk about a little bit, that's at the bottom, right at the very bottom. Okay, so you see taxes, so that's the taxes, and underneath that I've got the municipal taxes.
Yeah.
So I wanted to talk about that a little bit, because there are at least two people among the, I think eight or nine took advantage of the credit card or e-check option. I think two of them realized they were going to be late and got in just under the wire and paid $1.50 for that, rather than thousands, or not thousands, but hundreds in late fees. And I really wish more people would take advantage of that. I, I hate to, I hate seeing that the number of delinquents is pretty much the same from year to year, and I would love to see that drop. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to make that happen, and if, if people would get into the habit of using that option, I think we would see those delinquencies plummet, which is a huge goal of mine.
So can you, I didn't even, it didn't even occur to me to do it that way, I just wrote a check, so what would I need to do?
You can go onto our website and just go to the place where it says "Pay Bills" and choose Property Tax, and it's really very user-friendly, you just put in your credit card number, and you'll get a receipt as of the time that the transaction happens. So, in theory, it could be a way of beating our deadline at 5:00. If it rolls around at 5:00 and you do that transaction, you can still get in, still be stamped on the 9th. And otherwise, you've got to get to the post office, you've got to get here. Or else in theory, you could call me, that 10 minutes to 5:00 on the due date, and hand me, give you your credit card number, and it would still go through as of that date. You don't have to come to the town offices, you can call or do it online.
Now, if I wanted to come out of my bank account, so I don't have to pay the 3% or whatever credit card fee?
Yeah, 2.65%.
And I go to the website, can I do that all at once?
Yes.
Just give it routing number and account number?
Yes, it's also, you choose that as an option on the, on the website, it's very, very true.
Okay, and that happens on the fly, I don't have to, you don't have to get a canceled check first or anything like that?
No, 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 you just have to look at it, look at a check and make sure you get your router number correct. But as I say, at least two people took advantage of that, and I was very happy to see that. And if it were 100 next year, I would be that much happier.
And it's $1.50 for you?
$1.50 for an e-check, for the, that's basically a bank transfer. For a credit card, it's a 2.65%. And some people have done the math and decided that because of the points they get and also having a little more time to pay it off, that it works out to their advantage, rather than, you know, paying the fees to the delinquent tax collector than, you know, it can work out that way, to your advantage.
A buck and a half, well spent. So can we, can we put that suggestion on the tax bill next year?
There is a very limited amount of space that I am allowed to play with, I can try to fit that in, or, you know, maybe have it pre-printed on the envelopes or something, there are other things we can look at, I would, I would really like to explore those options too.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm loathe to write a check for any other bills, but it didn't even occur to me to do it in this case, so if it were on the tax bill, I would...
Yeah.
I think a lot of people would be more likely to use it.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's an action item for me, to look into ways to make sure that that's more promoting next year. The other thing I want to talk about is, so that's the people who, who are, that was talking about delinquencies, unfortunately. The other thing is people who overpaid, and I want, in the past, you recall that I've, I've sent out the overpayment refund checks in the end of December. That was, that was Bill's decision, and I followed through on it, because you'd want to make sure that every check that's going to bounce, bounces before you start writing refund checks. But the vast majority of these overpayments happened because people's escrow companies paid the amount on the original bill.
Right.
Those are not going to bounce. So I would like to get those checks out now, as soon as possible. It has to be a special warrant, and Joan is working on it, so I would like to, there's, I'm not sure who they are, but that, this is a number of people.
Wow.
And she, she can, each one of those, you have to create them as though they're a vendor, and it's very time-consuming, so Joan is going to work on that, I hope, either later this week or next week, but I'm hoping that as soon as that's ready, three of you can come in and sign it right away, so I could process those checks and get them out, so people can use it for Christmas shopping, rather than New Year's.
Okay, will that happen in the course of a regular meeting, or are you saying we're going to all have a special meeting for that?
I'm hoping, we can do it before the next meeting, which is two weeks.
Okay.
I would hope that, that maybe Dave could just get you in some morning, and we need three signatures on the morning. And, boy, I really, I really wish that when people, I wish people would do their home set declarations when they do their taxes, and save themselves all of this misery, because I know that every single one of these, well, not everyone, like 80% of these people had to go through hell with their banks, and it's just really, really an annoyance, they could be spared if they did their paperwork on time. I just, I get so many calls, and I, I just feel for every single one of them, but it's, it's a cascade that happens when you don't do your home set declaration on time, before the tax bills go out. It's a real headache. So that's, so I just want to make sure you guys are on notice that that special warrant is going to happen, and...
Okay, I don't think that will be anything for us, except just another, another warrant in the stack, at a regular meeting.
That's right, yep. So any questions about any of that? I zipped through the numbers, because they're not all that interesting in mid-month, but if you had any questions about any of that, you could talk about it.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Melanie. All right. Ken Coonrad from our Cemetery Committee is here, and we are going to talk some more about whether or not we should close the cemeteries in the winter.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Just a little background. I guess it was a couple of months ago that we were at a committee meeting, and in view of some circumstances that we've had a couple or three times in cemeteries past two or three years, I made the statement that maybe we ought to consider refusing to do burials if the conditions aren't allowed. And the committee picked up on that and did a lot of discussion about it, and that, and their decision was that we ought to not bury between the 1st of December and the 1st of April. Not sure I was in full support of that, but that was the committee's decision, they wanted to explore that. But it was my intent to simply make a determination that for safety reasons, or reasons of, and I'll explain later, about the conditions, about the grave digging, and subsequent problems after the grave is covered, then I felt we should sometimes make that decision. And so that's where we are now. I think they kind of, I don't think they liked the fact that we should make a decision each time, because I think they felt that somebody said, "Well, yes you can," or "No, you can," you know, they did the boxing around. That's where we're at. I think their decision was, let's just not do it between 1 December, 15 December, and 1 April. I personally feel that there are not that many times when we can't, but there are times when, because of safety, because of damage that was done last year, serious damage done at center, and the fact that when they dig during real deep freezes, and a lot of chunks, and when you fill with chunks, as soon as April may come, you've got potholes. And you film, and you come back in a month and you film again. And the guys say, "Well, call the guys that did it and have them come back and do it." Yeah, we can do that. But I do it, you know, I just, and sometimes the families call, say, "Tease, I gotta pick up the sinkhole." And I get up there and take a few, wheelbarrow dirt or something and fill it and seat it down. That's, these are some of the problems. Yeah, in the last two or three years, as you're probably aware, we've had a lot of ice storms. And when you have an ice storm in a cemetery, and it's covered with whatever, three inches or 10 inches of snow, you don't know what's under there. We've had some spills with people coming and falling, because they don't know that ice is under there. So I personally feel we ought to, we ought to have, we have some discretion, and I would not do that unilaterally, I would certainly tell Dave about it, I would certainly tell the committee chairman about it, you know, and jointly make a decision, we're just not going to, we're not going to do it, we're going to wait until conditions are, are such that we can. That's, that's where I, that's where I am on that.
If, if we made a motion to do that, do you think the Cemetery Committee is going to be upset that we went against their wishes?
No, I, no, I don't think so.
Okay, I mean...
No, I don't, I don't think they were, I don't think they were fixed in their decision. I think they felt like that would just eliminate the issues. And by the way, I have, I have talked to both the local funeral homes, and they both feel like it does create some problems. However, the first question that came up, where are you going to put the, where are you going to put the body?
Yes.
The casket. Well, Bennington would let us use their vault, and we now have a vault in North Bennington. But the real, the real issue is, it's kind of hard on a family to have a funeral, and put it away and then have to come back to it, you know, a month or three months later. And I understand that, I had that situation in my own, in my own, so those are the, those were the comments from the funeral homes.
Is it true that use of the vault in Bennington is, they're charged 375 or something?
You know, I didn't, I didn't address how much they would charge. I'm assuming, I may be wrong, you know, assuming, that the families would have to pay for that.
Yeah, okay.
In order, if I can, for your question, I spoke to the chair of the committee this morning, and it was not her intent to have this cause, a commotion about this, they're willing to go ahead with further discussion and move in this direction if needed.
I, just to get off-center, I'd, I'd make a motion that, that, that the burials during the wintertime, from the dates that you indicated, would be at the discretion of just you alone, or is there...
Yeah, I would not want to do it unilaterally, I don't think that would be appropriate, but I would tell Dave, tell chairman of the committee, and, you know, if they agree, then we'll make the funeral home known that we just can't do it now. It's going to be unsafe, conditions aren't right.
The, the point is, there's not, not going to be a lot of different people making decisions, it's just going to be you.
Right, yes.
Okay, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion that burials in the winter be postponable by agreement between the head of the Cemetery Committee and the town administrator, is that correct?
I, if I could make a suggestion, that the burials between those days would be at the discretion of the cemetery superintendent in consultation with the town administrator and chair of the Cemetery Committee.
Yes, my only comment is, it's possible.
Well, let's not get too far into discussion, let's try to word a motion and then we'll discuss it.
Only, only because, to say, between agreement between the two parties, you may never have an agreement, we may just have to say no.
Yeah.
So we need to have that. I'm just thinking, though, we want to say it between certain dates, because it's very possible that on the 1st of November, you have a heck of a storm.
We could have a hurricane.
And it should be, you know, anytime, I think, but that's...
Okay, so I, so, so I'll take away what I, I put in there the dates, I, I guess all burials, can we say all burials?
Yeah, yeah. That, that, I think that would be better.
Okay, so, so the determination of whether or not a burial is feasible, given the weather and the conditions...
It's for safety reasons?
For safety reasons.
For safety reasons.
Would be a decision jointly between the head of the Cemetery Committee and the town administrator, is that...
And the maintenance.
And the Cemetery Committee Chair?
Committee Chair, that's the town administrator, and the maintenance, and the...
Cemetery Superintendent.
Cemetery Superintendent, he's the one that would have the...
Yes.
Yeah, me, right?
Yeah.
Dave, when you think you have that, would you read it back to me?
Yeah, I might be paraphrasing this too. Okay, all burials are at the discretion of the superintendent of, the cemetery superintendent, let's do it that way, the town, in consultation with the town administrator and the chairman of the Cemetery Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Okay, now, discussion. Go ahead.
Winter time, we got a foot of snow, who is responsible for plowing out and making that sort of stuff?
Well, we had a situation, this, we had, we had a funeral Friday, but the, there was three inches of snow on bare ground, so I had, I had plowed, and it was at center, I had it plowed one round, and that was it.
But, when, when you say you had to plow, did, did you hire somebody, or...
I asked, I asked Jay to come up and plow.
Okay, and so...
And he'll charge, he'll charge, I'm sure, my maintenance.
Sure.
Out of my maintenance budget to do that.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to find out, is the town is going to be paying for the, for the clearing of, of the roadway?
Yeah, that's pretty much, and sometimes, last year, we had the road crew do, do it a few times. A problem with that is that our plows are much wider than Jay's plow, and it's much harder for them to miss corner markers and miss bumps.
All right. But, but the point is, the town is still responsible for not keeping it open all the time, but when, when the, when there is going to be...
When we need to, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And maybe that charge should go to the, to the deceased family, I don't, I don't know.
That's, I don't know.
It's our cemetery, you know?
Right.
Right.
I think it says, if we have a cemetery in our township, we maintain it, and I guess that's, that would be part of it, I guess, wouldn't you think, Tony?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
That makes more sense than...
Yeah. So that would mean that during the winter, we don't plow unless we have...
On a regular...
On a regular, unless we need to.
That's right.
Which would make it incredibly difficult if we have a snowy winter.
Yep, that's right.
So then, that's his decision. Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. And certainly Jay's, yeah, that's what I was thinking, that Jay would be the one who definitely would be...
Yeah, or, or somebody that has a, you know, a smaller, smaller plot.
Yeah. And, yeah, I would assume, and boy, I thought I knew that in other towns, they don't, they don't bury during the winter.
There are a number of towns, and I don't, I don't, I don't have a list of them, but there are a number of towns in Vermont who close right up, they do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we know that, you're sure of that, because we had, we were discussing earlier that there seemed to be some disagreement about whether or not we'd establish that as a fact.
I, I will, I will give a rundown on that, but I, I have talked to funeral directors, and they know of towns that will not let them bury.
Well, I got to say, I'm, I'm in favor of just not having burials in the winter. This sounds like it could get to be confusing and a mess and expensive. We've already talked about, when we were discussing plowing in the cemeteries, the problem of you get ice, then you get snow, and, you know, not even counting, you know, family members trying to get to a grave and slipping and falling, just plow trucks trying to get in after we have not plowed, and get in to clear a grave site without doing damage to it. It just seems like a problem. You mentioned the problem of digging a grave in, in frozen ground, creates a situation that has to be cleaned up later. We, you know, the, we, I think we have to be really careful about the wording of this, because in terms of who's actually making the decision here, it's the superintendent in consultation with, you know, we trust you, but, I mean, this is a, a policy we're establishing here.
I understand.
If we get a superintendent who wants to have a burial in a blizzard, because it's, you know, his, his family that wants it, and it's going to cost us a lot of money to, to clear and dig and all of that, that, I, I just think we need to...
That's kind of common sense, though.
Think more about it.
And also, I was talking to Dave, I did do a count, and last year, we only had four.
Your second.
So, you know, it's not that many, we're not going to be that many. From, from, I think it was from the, I think it was from the end of December until the end of March, only had four.
And we'd already decided we were not going to plow the, the cemeteries in the winter, right?
Sure.
So if this happens, we've got a, we've got three feet of snow, and we've got to find a grave, and find a road, and not run into other gravestones while we're doing it.
With the ability to delay, we pass this, and Ken can delay it, and as we slack off from the storm, I mean, it is possible for the road crew to bring up some more appropriate equipment to help to get in a little bit, and would be adding town resources to it, but if we hit a really bad spot, I mean, our track excavator can be trailered anywhere, and that will go through anything, if it, if it got that bad, we really need to do this. But that's the benefit of saying, hey, we're coming off a huge storm, it's going to be five to 10 days before we can do this. Clearly, you know, from the storm and recovery days, it's at least five days before the road crew can get to do it, you know, but there are options out there. But you're always going to need someone like Jay or Ken to be there to, you know, because Jay and Ken can walk this cemetery and know where everything is, but we can't go up alone, because we will hit things, you know, it will happen.
We could also have a winter without snow, and more. A burial would be easier.
Yeah, that's right.
I think the one thing that we're forgetting is the wishes of the family. I, I really...
Yeah, and I, and I understand it.
I, I know you're creating a lot of worst, worst-case scenarios, but it's still his decision, and I, I really don't want to shut down a cemetery. I'm willing to bet that if we told somebody absolutely no, they could come up with a good lawyer, and we would be burying. But, um, I think the wishes of the family have got to be considered in all this.
Absolutely.
And not just a business decision.
Yeah, I, I think it would, 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 it would make a difference if, for instance, it was in a corner of the village cemetery. You don't even have to go in the cemetery, you can park on Cleveland Avenue and, and do the burial. I think these things all have to be a part of the final decision.
That's why I like it, that, that we can work with it, not just completely close it.
Agreed.
Any more discussion? Dave, would you read that back to me again?
Uh, all burials are at the discretion of the Cemetery Superintendent in consultation with the Town Administrator and the Cemetery Committee Chair.
Um, should we change that to the timing of burials? Uh, because it has, it sounds like, um...
Okay, I see what you're saying.
The, the cemetery, this is a decision whether or not somebody gets to be buried.
Oh, no.
So, I, I would offer an amendment to reword that to say the timing of burials.
I, I would agree to that.
Seconded by Art, any discussion on that point? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the amended motion is, the timing of burials is...
Are at the discretion of the Cemetery Superintendent, Town Administrator, in consultation with the Town Administrator and the Cemetery Committee Chair.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So, that motion carries by a vote of three, one, zero. Good?
May I make just a statement?
Yes.
I just wanna say, I just wanna express my appreciation, not only to Dave, but the entire selector, or the support you've given me over the last nine years. Uh, really getting what I need to start to get the cemetery back in the condition we want them. And I think, uh, I especially appreciate Elliot Hijack's, uh, really getting to the issue of using cemetery funds in certain cases, 'cause we've talked about that over the years, but just nobody really took a hold of it and, uh, took the bull by the horn, and she did just that, so hopefully that'll give us some relief as well.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you for, uh, for your work as Superintendent, and I wanted to mention that we are gonna talk about those funds later on, uh, and we do appreciate, uh, you and the Cemetery Committee bringing, uh, those to our attention, and, uh, the bottom line is, yeah, there's a lot of money in cemetery funds, so, um, we should use that to, to make them first rate.
By the way, the artistic, uh, uh, memorials did a fantastic job in five hours, they already were here up at the Huntington area, if you go by there, notice, uh, the headstones for them, come on there.
Good.
Thanks, guys, very much.
Thank you.
I wanna stay for the comments about the, uh...
Okay, Road Report, Mike Yanati, Road Forum, and welcome. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, you've had your first winter storm, tell us how it went.
We made it through. Not too bad, we started off with, uh, shorthanded, but we made it through. We, everything went okay, a few breakdowns, but nothing too major. Um, all the roads were clear, no accidents, everyone was safe. Uh, no accidents with our trucks or anything, so we were good there.
So, if everything goes right, we get the roads cleared in, I believe, four hours, how long did it take this first time?
Um, I don't know if it was too long or too short, it all depends, 'cause we had it all cleaned up, and then another part, another van of snow came through and covered everything back over, so they're all, every storm is different. But I think the crew did well, we all worked together as a team, and we got, we got done, we needed to be done.
Yeah, I, I wasn't accusing, I was really trying to get a handle on how, how much longer it takes with, uh, five guys and breakdowns compared to four guys and everything's working.
I don't know yet. By the end of winter, I might be able to answer that differently.
Six guys and everything's working, I missed that.
Should go smoothly.
Yeah.
Um, a few things we did with the roads in the last couple of weeks was, uh, East Road is finally done, all the paving, that paving grant is done, we installed all the shoulder gravel, uh, marked all the culverts, and the state striked the road, so that's all done for now. We had a problem on White Creek Road with some water drainage coming out of Brownells. Was coming out of Brownells parking lot from a stream out back, and going over the road, and then refreezing at night with the colder temperatures, so we ditched alongside the road to divert the water from coming into the road and causing a problem mid-winter, like it has in the past from what I've seen. And just getting trucks ready, working on trucks, maintaining all of our winter equipment, getting ready for the next storm. Uh, spent all day working on trucks. Three guys did after, well, a couple of them plowed this morning. Had a few inches on the east roadside, and nothing on the west side. It's weird how that works.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we worked with the water department today, fixed a couple curb stops that were, probably, one, one leak, and one was back, and couldn't shut it off if ever had to. Got that out of the way, and got ready for the snow we're gonna get tomorrow.
Okay.
The other thing that we had to talk about was Glossenberry Road.
Yes, the state has decided they don't want to plow the, our end of Glossenberry Road anymore.
That's what I'm understanding, and before I started with the town, there was agreement that we were to make a turnaround up there, because there's a new resident who has put a retaining wall and narrowed up where the state used to turn around. So, we went up and we hauled a bunch of anchor and gravel, and some slope stone, and made a nice turnaround, fixed Old Gale Road, got the drainage to what it should be. We made it feasible to turn around, and I brought up the District One Supervisor, who takes care of that road, and he said that he would bring it to his supervisor's attention, and Dave emailed, and they respectively...
Respectively declined.
Declined. I'm, I don't, I'm not opposed to a few options that we have to go that way. I'm not sure what you guys wanna do.
Yeah, the situation there, just so everybody's on the same page, is, uh, Glossenberry Road is, I believe it's called an unorganized town.
Yes.
And so, they don't have anybody to plow their roads, and by default, the state does it.
Yes.
Uh, and then you go through Glossenberry, then you end up back in Chasbury.
For three tenths of a mile.
Three tenths of a mile, and that, the end of the road there is ours, and up until this last week, the state has just gone on down that, that, uh, three tenths of a mile, and turned around and come back out, and that was just an agreement that we had.
Yeah.
We owed them, what, like a sack of sand every year?
Yeah, it was supposed to be like ten buckets of sand or something, and no buckets have been exchanged for years, so... I mean, the basic problem is that one of our residents, uh, threatened to sue the state because they claimed that the driveway was blocked, and they couldn't get into their house, and the roof collapsed, this is a camp really up there. Whatever the merits of that is, that's what's really spooking the state. It's the same resident who sent us a letter informing us of that, and that they put us on notice about it, but... Well, there's issues there legally that I won't go into, but, uh, essentially, and Tim, you were up there to meet when we met, Rob and him, we built what they wanted, they just don't wanna do it. So, the options, uh, as I mentioned, were either we try and put pressure on V-Trans to change their mind, we see if V-Trans will pay us to do all Glossenberry Road, or we just simply wait until the state ever gets around to plowing Glossenberry Road, and then go up and do our three tents, because we can't get up there unless they plow the several miles to it.
So, that's what we're talking about, is several miles of plowing?
From where the end, was it like three miles?
I think it's three miles.
We're not gonna get a dump truck up there.
It might be under three miles, but if that road isn't plowed, the truck that we have plowing East Road, that side, the truck would never make it up through there unless he was plowing and sanding. Like, I went up and plowed our section of Glossenberry at the tail end of the storm on Friday. What I did was pick up, and nobody, nobody was up there. And I didn't see anything that was done, so I just buzzed up, plowed our section, and left. But to have a tandem dump truck go all the way up there on an unplowed road is, without plowing, is near impossible. He might as well plow himself right up in the sand and be done with it. But it, but that's not our responsibility.
And how practical is it to coordinate with V-Trans for when they get the first three miles done, so you know that you can go and do the last three tenths of mile during a blizzard?
That's not their priority, their priority is the main roads. So, I feel that they forget about Glossenberry. So, I, from what I've experienced, I don't see it a priority. Especially when somebody is calling me, asking me for numbers to help them out, because Glossenberry hasn't been touched Saturday morning, so...
What's the pass, what's the, how do you go about charging the state for that? Do you have to have an agreement ahead of time?
So, I would say that we would have to have an agreement on a cost. What, I mean, I don't wanna do, I don't think the town should do it for nothing.
No.
Not at all, I'm willing to, we're up there, I mean, we're, you can't get any closer. I'm willing to work with V-Trans to make something work, and make the residents up there satisfied as best as we can. Um, but every time we dropped a plow or sanded, we would have to document that. We would have, you know, how much sand, a rough estimate on how much sand was used on that section of road, and how many times we plowed up and down, so there would have to be a log on that. Couldn't just wing it.
To get paid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we arrived at some sort of, uh, fixed price contract to just take it over for...
That would probably be the easiest.
For the year, yeah.
I know, um, V-Trans has another unorganized town that they deal with, and it's Somerset, on Somerset Road.
Makes sense.
And they contract that out. I don't know, I know, I never got, I just know that a contractor plows it, but I know it's an unorganized town.
My suggestion is we pursue that, rather than...
Pursue private.
Pursue having, being paid to do that. If we're gonna do it, we've gotta be paid.
Yes, yes. Now, the other option that Dave has suggested, and I think it probably ought to be pursued somewhat, is talk to our legislators and see if they can bring pressure to bear on V-Trans not to just give up. I mean, they're, it, yeah, I know they don't wanna deal with somebody that's threatening to sue them, but they're plowing, they're required to plow three miles of road, and then they've got three tenths of a mile that we've accommodated their turnaround, and they just decide they don't wanna do it. It really kinda puts a burden on us.
The turnaround is made big enough now where you don't need to plow that snow towards that driveway, even though that driveway probably isn't correct, but there is enough room there to not block that. And I've had, I have permission to expand behind that retaining wall to make a spot for snow. It's just haven't gotten that far yet, but the turnaround is in.
Well, what would, what would you recommend?
Um, I, I think we should, I know I, I say add more, work more roads, but I think we should see if, if that's something they're interested in doing. If they're interested in having us take it over.
Talk to them about, uh...
I mean, I haven't heard nothing but complaints about how, you guys are right there, why don't you just do it? Because it's not, it's not our road, I mean...
But that's just a driver talking.
Yeah, yeah.
Dave, would that be you to talk, to talk to Rob Bailey about what it would, what they would want?
Yeah, I'll see, 'cause the other odd part of it, our agreement with Glossenberry, this is the only thing we don't provide to Glossenberry, is maintenance of the road. I mean, our agreement lets them have the transfer station, fire department, everything else but the roads. So, maybe it's just time to enter a little negotiation and get the money to be paid for it.
If really do V-Trans help, because they wouldn't have to lose focus on their highways to go plow that.
Yeah, but whatever they're getting out of Glossenberry's, uh, funds, we should get out of it, with just transfers.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what are we talking about for money?
Yeah, I'll contact Rob, you know, tell him this is what we're thinking of, and I, I kinda agree that they'll probably lean towards, yeah, let's get out of this if we can. Because they're sending a truck with the blade up for a few miles to get in there to do three miles and leave, and then come back hours later and do it again. And the whole time that truck is moving to get back onto that road, it's not doing anything. Because they're not saltin' or plowing our roads, they're just driving right to it.
Mm-hmm.
If we can work together, why not?
Yeah.
And that's all I have this week.
Okay, so, shall we instruct Dave to talk to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Rob about seeing what it would, what they would want in a way of a contract or arrangement to have us plow, uh, that whole stretch?
I, I just have one thing. Uh, Dave, do you know how often it is that Brownells permit, act of fifty, permit comes up for reviewing?
Yeah, I, I was just talking to him a couple of weeks ago about that, I think it's, we decided it must be about two years ago. But I'm gonna go back now when this came up. They have a ditch, part of the agreement is that ditch has to be cleared, so I'm gonna go up and make sure the ditch, they have it dug out.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's where that water's coming from, because if it gets blocked here, it just starts rolling down.
And that's what happened, and...
That's my point.
It was blocked, and it just overtopped, and came over their parking lot, and it goes across White Creek. And in the summertime, nobody notices water going across the road, but once it starts freezing, it could cause havoc.
So, you're thinking this is something Brownells should, should have taken care of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll get to it.
Yeah, ask them if they'll take care of it, yeah. Okay, anything else on roads?
No, thanks, Mike, good luck tomorrow.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, item ten is Town Garage Transfer Station. It's a placeholder, uh, anything we need to deal with there?
Yeah, this is a placeholder, there's nothing, uh, uh, that we need to deal with right now. They're getting ready to pour the flooring, uh, and start work on the interior. The, I'm not quite sure, there's several different parts of the site work going on right now. Uh, so, it's all coming together, but we're into the kind of interior stuff, but it'll be all boxed up soon. Uh, the transfer station is up and running, and the road is still a little rough, we know, but the road part now still has to be raised up a few feet, so, um, it's all part of the site work, which is a little bit out of sync here. Um, and, you know, it's, it's good, the transfer station's open, we've noticed a few things that we need to change, and we still need a few parts in there, still need a little shed for the compost and things, but it's coming together. For something we had to open a couple of months behind our schedule, but then I had to open it like immediately, and it, it came together pretty well, so... But other than that, yeah, there's, there's nothing major going on, except we're spending a lot of the money on it now, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Um, yes, Tyler Reddish.
What's the future of the, of the swap shop?
Uh, it will reappear, once we, uh, there will be a swap shop once we get, uh, all the dust settled.
Okay.
Yes.
It's a little better organized than it was to be?
Um, it will be smaller.
It will be smaller, you know the pad behind Shelley's, uh, hut now? That pad is there for a reduced-size swap shed. Uh, and trying to just keep it from getting, I mean, you saw how it kept piling up. I mean, there has to be a system of, if things come in, and not things like someone dropping, you know, we get weird things in there that really should have gone in the other side. So, it'll be a way to police it better, because the door will be a Shelley's... So it'll be a way to police it better because the door will be, Shelley's shed is here, you'll have to walk by her shed to get to the door to go in, so it'll be harder for people to leave, you know. There's been all kinds of stuff left outside, which then we, you know, the rest of the tenants have to pay to throw out because we have to throw the things out. Inside, you saw how it was, it's just huge. We wanted to be cleaner, Shelley would like to go back to its original kind of thing was for books, which is a great thing to have with the books in there so people can come get books and things, but there were a lot of, I mean, people bringing in the 15-year-old dirty toaster and putting it on the shelf is really just for me to pick up and throw out in, in the garbage can, you know, it's, it'll be smaller to try and contain it from getting out of hand again. But that pad is there for it. It's just, uh, it wouldn't, like I said, it went from, uh, shouldn't have been open.
That's a pad for a salt shed.
Huh?
That's a pad for a...
No, the pad behind Shelley's hut, there's a little concrete pad there. That'll be the pad for the swap shed. The small one. No, the big paved area, that's the salt shed there.
Couldn't see that being a swap shed.
Yeah, that would be a big swap shed.
Okay, yeah, I guess I would mention one thing that Dave and Shelley and I have talked about out there is a lot of people are, um, seeing the, the trip into the transfer station as an in and out and a trans, the, the trip isn't a round trip. And I think on, once we get better signage, uh, that will be clearer. And I think right now the situation is it's such a wide area that it's not obvious that it's, it's a lane of traffic. So for everybody watching at home, the idea with the swap shed is you pull in, put your stuff out and then drive, continue to drive forward and back out and around and then, so you don't back up and then drive back into the oncoming traffic.
Yeah, and the signs are a little bit behind, as I said, and maybe because the crew can't get to it because we have a lot of things going on. But I found out Saturday morning when the probably 60% of the old surface area leading into the old swap shed had been torn up by the site people. So I had to decide to get the new one open Tuesday morning as quick as I could with whatever sign I could find to point people in directions and things, so. It was a little rushed, but people will get used to it and it'll, it'll function. And it is wide, which is intended to be, so people, when they leave their car, there's plenty of room to get around it and everything, so it does need some more signs though.
All right, is that it on transfer station?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item 11 is zoning bylaws. Uh, we are marching toward having a vote on zoning bylaw changes in March and the Planning Commission had a hearing a week or so ago on the proposed bylaws and there were some changes that came out of that hearing. And so what they have sent to us is, um, a report as required by law on what they are recommending that we, we do. And Chris Williams, our chairman of our Planning Commission is here. Chris, would you like to summarize that or would you like me to just read your report?
Well, the report's kind of dry and legalistic, so I'll just give you a quick summary of what happened is, based on a series of emails from Dave Kiernan and others concerning the role of the town health officer in inspections, this pertains to the motel to housing bylaw, and we had called for annual inspections. Well, and we had this reviewed by the town attorney and I was pretty confident that we had this thing right, but apparently there've been some changes in the role of the town health officer and so they can inspect based on complaints from the public or from, what else was it, David? There was...
Landlord or tenant.
Landlord, right.
Landlord or tenant.
But the town wasn't one of the parties that could ask them to do inspections, so they were getting into weeds of legalistics on, but we have to take notice of this stuff because somebody will call us out sooner or later on it. And so we deleted at the public hearing as a result of this information, we deleted the requirement for annual inspections. State is not about to do it, the town can't do it. So it's not a great situation, rental housing is notoriously code deficient, but where, where could we go with this, Dave? So as disappointed as I am in the fact that there's practically no code enforcement in Vermont, um, we, we just have to roll with it. The other piece was the...
Yeah, before you leave, I'm scrambling here to try and bring up exactly, um, the change.
It was two sentences.
And it looks like I've, oh, here it is. Yeah, okay, it was right, I guess in the, the document I have here is the one that you forwarded. So in this sentence here, which says, "Upon occupancy, the building was inspected by fire safety," with the zoning administrator affirming that all requirements have been satisfied, which is a normal thing for a change of use. There was a sentence saying annual inspections, that's been, I was gonna show you exactly what's been taken out, but it's already been taken out, so, back to you.
The, the only other thing that we moved forward was a vote to delete table point zero four, table of uses.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about the, um, the home occupation Airbnb thing first and then we'll get to that line.
Well, that advanced, there was a little public comment about that. Uh, nobody had any substantive opposition to it. Uh, it was more nature explaining how it dovetailed with other provisions of the bylaws such as accessory dwelling provisions. And that seemed like it all fit together pretty well and we had looked at that in drafting the bylaw.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people and let people at home know that Airbnb type short-term rentals that we're planning to deal with as a home occupation is the main , the main...
I noticed today on, the state of Vermont was $5 million in tax receipts from Airbnb across the state, so something must be going on out there. So we think we might be a little behind the curve in, in implementing this, but we think that it's something that's already going on in the community across the state for that matter.
Right.
So we voted to delete the table of uses. We were not convinced that any explanation about how to modify it was self-depressive confusion, we said, "Get rid of it."
The whole thing?
Yep. It's just a quick reference, table art, the language of the bylaw governs in any case.
Yeah, I just, I thought we were putting it in there for helping people understand it, but...
Well, it was a good idea, but it didn't quite pan out.
Okay.
Okay, so that, so that summarizes the report from the Planning Commission. Now it is up to the Select Board to accept those changes. Uh, we can make changes ourselves, we don't, we're not required to do it exactly the way the Planning Commission says. If we have major changes, like if we were to move zoning, change somebody's zoning or something like that, we would have to go back to the Planning Commission and start again. But minor changes, such as maybe a disagreement on whether or not to drop the table of uses, uh, we can make that change, have a public hearing with those changes and proceed in a straight line to the vote. I would, um, mention that this question of the table of uses and how to deal with it, there've been a couple of options and we've talked about it a lot in the Planning Commission. Um, I guess I should back up a little bit further and say there was some confusion about it and I only have in front of me the, the new version that I'm gonna recommend that we adopt instead of dropping it. But the old version had, uh, this table that says what you can do in which zones and in the places where something was not mentioned, there was just an X, but more problematically, that X was explained as not permitted. And, uh, some people have interpreted that to mean a thing is specifically not permitted in that zone even for, say, a home occupation. Uh, and that was not the intention of this, it was just to say at a glance, these are the things that are expressly permitted. So one option, uh, that was circulated is that we take this X equal not permitted out of the legend and where something is not specifically mentioned in a zone, you just put a dash and then we presume no one will be able to interpret new language, no matter how, how vivid their imagination from this table. Um, the problem originally came up from questions at the DRB. Uh, the DRB has weighed in on the question. This is their preferred solution, is that we leave it in and take the word X out and put dashes in. Their second option, or maybe even their third, they had several, was to delete it My recommendation is that we, we keep it in, it's a handy thing. Big point of the last bylaws rewrite was to make it more user-friendly. Jim Sullivan put a lot of work into generating this for us. I, I recommend we keep it.
Is there gonna be any explanation of what that dash means?
Absolutely not.
Why, the lawyers are gonna have fun with this.
No, it was the explanation that caused us problems before. And, uh, the lawyer has weighed in on this before and said that that was not a logical interpretation that was arrived at before, reading new law into the bylaws, new words into the bylaws, that were not intended from the table of uses because it said, because it defined what the X meant, so I think we're on solid ground.
That will tell.
So, um, I recommend we make a decision about this tonight so we can, uh, proceed with our, uh, plan to set a hearing and review this with the public. The, I believe the recommended and almost required date for the hearing is 17 December, which would be one of our regular meetings. Comments on the table of use?
What, Chris White, what was the decision of the board to delete it altogether? You think there still could be some misinterpretation by a lawyer or something, is that what you're saying?
Well, we've had a couple of sessions with the DRB and listened to their stories about lawyers challenging this and, um, you know, if it's up to anybody's imagination what that dash means, lawyers will have a good imagination. Um, I don't know where it comes down, but you know, what does it really mean?
But, but, but that's not the final, that's not the final say. I mean, that, you've still gotta go to all the things that are written in there.
The text of the bylaw governs, this is just a quick reference, so, you know, I'm a little frustrated that it became such an issue, but it just hasn't really worked out that.
If you get into, if you look into that list now, it kind of becomes like an oddly specific list of industries, some obsolete, some, it's just, it's a very kind of, it becomes a strange kind of list of, I guess what I just said, industries and it, you know, it leaves some things out and, and then if you've got this dash that's open to interpretation now. And if you scroll through the list a little bit, you'd see, it covers a lot of ground, but it does, it's still a playground for interpretation. If you go further down, I think you get into like...
Yeah.
A lot of the deckers in there.
And if you look, there's one, there's one good example here, if you look right in the middle there, I'm a graphic artist, I work from home sometimes as a graphic artist on a computer, but if you look in there, it used to be an X, but graphic arts was specifically like disallowed in most of the town. And of course, what they meant by that was like a lithography shop or something like that, but nowadays, graphic arts means...
It could be anything.
Working on your computer at home, so it's, it's, it's kind of a strange list.
It really is too specific, yeah.
Well, think about, you know, it is a long list of things, but again, think of, you know, you wanted to start a lithography shop, um, with this, you could see, you know, where to start shopping for, uh, a place to put your shop very quickly. Otherwise, you've got 100 pages of bylaws to read through to see where it might be allowed to have a lithography shop. That was the point of it.
And then if you try to start one as a home occupation and somebody immediately points to this list and says, "Uh, there's a dash there," I guess, it used to be an X, I guess, so they would say, "No can do." This came up when someone tried to open a auto repair shop up on Myers Room. Uh, there was a hair salon just opened up next to me and the neighbors were looking at this list very carefully. The DRB will tell you that this, this graphic has been problematic for them, so. It seemed like a path of least resistance just to strike the whole thing, but the dash definitely improves it, leaving it more vague than it...
But again, I, I point out the DRB has recommended this modified as the solution to this problem. Do we wanna think about it or do we wanna make a motion? Let me try since I'm in favor of it. I move that we modified the report from the Planning Commission to include the table of uses modified as described with X equal not permitted removed and dashes in place of X's. Give me a second, just so we can talk about it. Second to my Joe, thank you.
Joe.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No, no.
The, the vote is two for, two against, none abstating. Uh, the motion is not agreed to, so we will remove the table of uses from the bylaws as recommended by the Planning Commission, so no further action is actually required on our part. So, uh, the other thing to do is decide that we're gonna hold a hearing on December 17th, Select Board hearing on these bylaw changes. I think we can do that by consensus.
Right, yes.
All agreed?
Yes.
All right. Was there anything else we needed to do there, Chris?
I think I should rub it.
I think that's it. So we're, uh, we're just, we're just rubber stamping what you did, setting our own hearing?
You don't wanna disagree with your planning division.
There won't be real questions.
Hey, we've gotta look like we're doing something up here. Very good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, item 12 concerns Shire's housing project. They have been trying to get a grant, a roughly $500,000 grant from VCDP, Vermont Community Development Program, and, uh, we did just find out today that they were denied this round. They are being considered for the next round of funding, which could happen as soon as April.
Yeah, the application, the same application will be put in in February, the same exact application will be put in for this one with the funding date in April if it's approved.
But these, uh, these funds come with lots of strings attached and, uh, one of the strings involves an environmental assessment, which has been done, and, uh, the town is acting as a conduit for these funds as required by VCDP. And so one of the things we have to do is post a notice that this environmental assessment has been done and I believe Dave was telling me what, what we're required to do tonight is just agree that the wording... that the wording that has been provided to us is sufficient for the notice whereby the town says an environmental assessment has been done.
Yes, and it's also the notice of intent to request, to request the release of the funds. So we're acknowledging that their engineers, their environmental engineers have gone through, and this is all from HUD. It's not anything, they have to follow the HUD standards, the HUD report, which I copied to all of you. This statement that you need to approve tonight so I can get it in the paper or actually have them put it in the paper. This whole statement is also write what HUD wants. It's basically, they were telling me to just file basically a template and put this together. So there's no wiggle room in here. There is the odd statement that I asked about and got around to everyone that, where it says that we've approved the funding here.
Town of Shasbury.
The town of Shasbury has determined that the project will have no significant impact on human environment, which of course, because, you know, it's kind of oddly worded, but because we're sponsoring this, the environmental engineer is actually like an arm of us, even though it's a subcontractor to Shire's who's putting this together. But I was trying to think of a way to put this. It's somewhat the same as I have a general contractor over there who's putting up the town garage and there's a sub who's testing the material. And, you know, I take in the, okay, my engineer here is saying this material meets the compaction test and I'm signing the thing to send it forward. So this is just their engineer, environmental engineer is attesting to, and his license is on the line that he followed this HUD format and says there's no significant impact to the environment here.
I don't like what this says. This is saying that the town, town, this committee said there's no environmental impact and we did not say that.
We don't do that.
If they want to put in there that HUD has determined that there's no environmental impact, I'm fine with that. But this is saying that the town of Shasbury, this board, said there's no environmental impact and that's not right. We, we did not say that.
Do you believe there is an environmental impact from this apartment complex?
I believe that there is an impact. Now, whether it's significant or not, that's, that's for the public to determine. That's, that's what, that's what your hearings are for and that sort of stuff. Obviously, there's an impact. Is it significant? That's, that's when you have the public coming in and saying that. Or if they want to put that HUD, HUD engineer determined that there was no environmental impact, that's okay too. I just don't think that it's right to say the town of Shasbury has determined that there's no impact, significant impact.
Can we change the wording to say?
Because they're, because we're the actual people applying for this grant, we have to base, we're applying for it, we're the ones that will be, this is basically what they're asking tonight. They're asking for the board to agree to this statement that the town of Shasbury, who its engineer, has determined that the project will have no significant impact. Because by approving this, you're saying you agree with the environmental statement that was put around, that was done by, I forget the name of the engineering group out of New Hampshire, but that you accept that they've done that. Now, there's still the Act 250 hearing, there's still the DRB hearing.
Right.
But this allows the paperwork portion of this to go ahead. What they're saying by significant doesn't mean that something won't come up in 250 or, am I right on that, Chris? That they're not saying that nothing will come up in 250 or nothing. They're just saying that they followed the template of HUD, did the environmental study, their environmental engineer, and he doesn't find anything based on his experience that is significant in their categories. And they're just asking us to accept as, like our subcontractor, the validity of what they're saying.
My understanding about this is that the purpose of professional licensure as an engineer or an architect or a site technician is a transfer of liability. And so if you write on your letterhead that there is no environmental impact, you own that statement. And so I think that's really the legality that's at work here.
Then you're agreeing that this statement isn't quite...
No, I'm saying that whoever the site engineer is who's written this report has, has taken that liability in his report. And the purpose of licensure is to ensure that the, you know, if you say something, you're going to stand behind it, then your license to practice can be challenged for making an untrue statement.
That's fine. I'm saying, why don't they say that HUD or the person's name or something has determined that there's no impact? I'm just concerned that...
I miss that you're concerned.
Yeah, can we put that language in?
That's what I'm asking.
I'll have to ask, and we are on a very hard timeline with this, which is of their making, not ours.
Yeah, okay.
Because I only found out about this last Thursday, because no one had responded to anything before last Thursday. So I can get in touch with them tomorrow if you want to make a motion. Well, it's going to be very difficult to do because if they say no, we're going to miss all the deadlines through December.
Well, I mean, this was for this round of funding. I presume we've got new time now that the first, this round of funding...
I asked, my first reaction when I was told we didn't get the funding is good, we can put this off to February. And from all the people involved, they got no, this should move forward because this is nothing more than agreeing that we will request the release of funds if it's approved in April and that we agree that this environmental statement, or we accept this environmental statement. And now we're saying that we've determined based on our licensed engineer that no significant impact. And I know what you're saying too, Art, because that's why I, when this first was sent to me on November 7th, I immediately sent it back to them going, when did we do that? Because the wording here is a little vague. It shouldn't be of whoever was CRW, engineers are prepared to report, the town of Shasbury has asked to adopt it. Todd from that group today told me this is really canned language and this is the way the HUD documents run. So...
I presume this is that we signed off on a lot of similar language with the garage when we had environmental permits done and...
All the environmental permits that were done by MSK and everybody else. I mean, that's why we hire licensed professionals to do these things because we can't. And I hired another engineer to check on the engineers in the compacting that was done in the ground, who they're assessing the compacting. So, you know, you get the bill from them. But, you know, for this part of it, which can, you know, be challenged, if you go to 250 and people are bringing up some other factor, this can be challenged. And Chris is correct, this guy's license, he's an environmental engineer, this is what he does, his license is on here and we're accepting that this guy knows his business.
It's just that we've been, we've been trying to be very transparent with the public on this thing and this, this isn't, isn't quite saying that. That's, that's what concerns me.
Why don't we just change it and send it to them?
The gentleman back there.
Jim, Corby, yes.
Yeah, look at Dallas.
If we have a lot of faith in this engineer, would they, under his professional licensing authority, be willing to hold us harmless if we rely upon his work? Home page, hold harmless agreement?
Yeah, well, we could look into that too. I think, I don't even know where that would stand, but we could look into that.
I guess, I'm not so much concerned about being liable, it's just the fact that I don't think that this statement is...
The statement says we, we went out and...
That's right, and that bothers me.
We don't have control of it.
Because we've been telling people, we're going to take this one step at a time.
Yeah, read me the sentence again.
The town of Shasbury, I'll make it better with a curse, you hold on. The town of Shasbury has determined that the project will have no significant impact on the human environment. And that's what's in question here, because they don't mention, it's like we did it, which we did not.
Okay. I think, yeah, if you want to be literal about it, I think... So something like, the town of Shasbury agrees with the determination of engineer such and such that the project has no significant impact on the human environment. Let's change it to that and just send it to them. The first, worst they can do is say, no, you can't touch it. Is that, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What is the, do we have the engineering firm?
What exactly do you want it to say?
We want it to say that Shasbury agrees with the determination of the engineering firm that this project has no impact on the, no significant impact on the human environment.
You can preface it by saying, based upon the information, except for the application, including the certification by such and such engineer, that there be no significant impact, the town of Shasbury will sign off.
What do you prefer? I think either one is good.
I got Jim's.
Yeah, except, is that what it said? Sorry.
Say that again, Jim.
It's not agree with, yeah, we accept, it's not agree with, it's just that we accept.
It's based upon the recommendation of the, the town of Shasbury, the...
Yeah, actually, it's based upon the analysis, right?
Based upon and relying upon the...
I think a lot of words in here. How about the town of Shasbury accepts the determination of SRW environmental, in the determination that the project will have no significant impact on the human environment?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. I mean, we're accepting it, but we're not agreeing with it. We just accept that this engineer did it.
Yeah. Good?
Very good.
Good?
There's just one other thing, just above that, it talks about a radon system being installed in the new building. I think there should be buildings because there's going to be more than one building. It's just a small one.
Oh, okay, okay.
If they could make that building plural instead of... A passive radon mitigation system will be installed in the new building and activated if necessary. You got that, Dave?
Okay.
Okay.
The radon thing?
Just, just above that.
And say that again? You want to take a word out, right?
No, I want to make the word plural.
Where was that, Art?
Just, just...
Sorry, I was going to do the other thing.
Here, I underlined it.
Oh, okay, cool, thank you. Oh, buildings, okay. But you just want the S in buildings?
Yep.
So are we, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I do.
All right.
Whatever T read.
Can read it again, I think.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to put the S on building.
Yep.
So it'll be buildings. And then the sentence is amended to, the town, the town of Shasbury accepts the determination of SRW environmental, that the project will have no significant impact on the human environment.
Okay, we have a motion from Art to modify the combined notice for the parent project as read by Dave.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay, good. 400. Thank you, Jim. Always good to have a lawyer in the room.
I'll give you the power.
Thank you. Did, were there anybody else here that wanted to comment on this subject? I see a few fresh, fresh faces. There was one other thing, and that Stephanie Land asked me before we found out that the funding had been deferred for this round, asking if the select board could write a letter to VCDP asking that they, they provide the funding. Part of, you know, there's, everybody in the state is trying to scramble for funding for housing and so it's a, it's a tight market. I was suggesting the following letter, if the board will indulge me. Shire's housing is filling an urgent need in our community for workforce housing. Virtually every employer in our area is severely challenged to hire the talent they need to do jobs that are available today. Lack of workforce, workforce housing is a big part of that challenge. The vacancy rate in Bennington County for this type of housing is 0.5%. Apartments like Shire's is offering to build are waitlisted for over a year. Lack of workforce housing is hurting economic development in our area every day. Shire's grant request is a critical piece of their funding plan. We urge you to grant their request in the next funding cycle. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for helping Vermont communities. I would move that the select board send this to VCDP to help Shire's get the funding they need for this. Is there a second?
A second.
Check with the board here first.
I think we should have a full board for this, Ken should be here.
That's a fair point. Any other discussion? Jim?
Would it be outlined and so we'd get two, three letters from local employers to attach to that? Someone like from...
Beckham's.
Daily, I don't know who.
That's a very good idea, yeah.
I don't know, but...
Jim.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Why don't we have them sign it too?
Have who sign it?
Have them add it to that.
Oh, the, the employers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to name any names, but I know one employer and there are three families living in a little house. But I don't know who owns that house. I think the employer owns the house, but that's just one situation that I'm aware of.
Joe, were you wanting to make a formal motion to postpone?
Yes.
We have a motion to postpone this item until we have a full board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
But then will you, so you can get the other companies to sign on that?
Yes, yes, I'm trying to remember if a motion to postpone is debatable. Let's assume it's not. All in favor of postponing this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So that motion carries 310. So we will postpone this motion until our next meeting.
That should give, this still gives plenty of time before, it goes before the next cycle.
I think, yeah, despite what Dave was told today, I think we can assume that if we got knocked down this round, that we've got at least a couple of weeks to get our ducks together. Okay, so I will take an action then to add local employers to the signatories on the We are cranking it out tonight, boys. Budget, that shouldn't take long.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know, because this is a preliminary really, I put together for the board and discussion with a number of different department heads, it's not final in any way, but it was to give everyone a general idea of where we're going. The, the increase, even with any increase this year, we'll still be running well behind the inflation rate over the last five years. As you can see the number right there, this graph increases at 3.1%, which would raise the tax rate a penny and a half. But we are still below from the fiscal 15-year budget. When you add inflation to that, we're still above where the budget would be with inflation. In fact, this is the first budget that's been, when I inherited the 15 budget, that was 2.1... was 2.1 million, and this budget is just barely 2.1 again, after five years, so we're really, uh, at some point, we have to go up a little bit, but, uh, still, we're talking about penny five, as it says here, as it sits here today in the first draft, and we've covered a lot of things in this, uh, the big additions are, uh, increasing money for the co-file, co-file downstairs, it's the preservation of the records in the vault, we have all these books, time takes its toll, no matter how well it's controlled, and it's just to keep up, uh, copying these books. Uh, our assessor list, I don't know if you want me to go through these quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the assessor list, there is going to be a restructured position in a contract with NIMRIC. Uh, NIMRIC is the support end for all the data entry and all the assessment in the state, uh, they will actually assess properties for us on a contract, and they will back up our people here, uh, which is, uh, actually a, a very good deal, and we reduce the in-house costs and bringing a, a professional outsider.
Are we, uh, are the, uh, listers, uh, again, talking about stepping down in, from the role of lister and having this all taken over by NIMRIC?
Yeah, we were, we are back to where we were a couple of years ago, uh, before, before Jim passed away, that, uh, there's an option in the state to have, uh, an appointed assessor instead of elected listers. Uh, listers are in agreement that it might be time to move for that, we were talking about that a couple of years ago, and Kim would be the assessor, uh, so what we would do now is a, a hybrid system of, and they would both stay around, uh, if this was approved, uh, to help out in the beginning, but we would have an assessor, uh, that, uh, would be able to do the day-to-day work, same amount of time, the major support would come from NIMRIC. Now, NIMRIC, they will help do the grand list, they will help, uh, match up, there's two main periods in April, and then in July, where everything has to be put together correctly. They have staff that will come around on a contract and make sure everything's in place so the tax bills get out on time, that April 1st is the close-off, April 15th, not listed, so it's the 1st of the 15th, where you close off the coming tax year, they'll make sure everybody's property is in, things that have to be, uh, inspected, they'll, you know, just make sure everything's being done right by our assessor here, and our assessor here will continue to train into a, a, a good position. Right now, our expenses are a little high in that area, and then this is a way to cut them back down, but bring in, you know, the people who wrote the program to help us get through some of the, uh, hard spots we hit. We haven't had the tax rate out on time in four years now, or five years, and it's not acceptable because it's, it's listed clearly out, the steps, follow the steps, boom, 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 and if you get backed up, we would have, we would have NIMRIC come in, provide the assessment, this also includes NIMRIC training of the people here so that we can work the system better. Uh, we've had them in, we've all talked to listers and myself with the NIMRIC representatives, and, uh, we're assessing that this would be the way to go, and to professionalize it moving into the future. And, you know, the fact of the matter, it's getting very difficult to fill any position like this, we pay a whopping, like, gave a big raise last year, they hit 12 bucks, you know, so it's hard to get people to come in and to do this, and, uh, it really becomes a very technical position, especially when you're going out and doing assessment of homes, that's the benefit again of having NIMRIC, because they will send in a professional assessor, who will just look at the properties, do the comparisons, and come up with a number and be able to defend it, uh, at the BIA, BCA hearing, so it's a bit of an adjustment, it's a bit of a change, but, uh, many, many towns, uh, the VLCT website is covered with ads for towns looking for assessors, and this is a way to make something in-house here, because through PVA, you can, uh, with some property evaluation from the state, there's a whole training program for Assessor One, Assessor Two, Assessor Three, you just send them to training, and, uh, I've met some very, very good assessors that are hired as listers, uh, in this, uh, way it's transforming the state, so it'll, it'll create a better position, I think, and at less cost than the way we're doing it now, because it's pretty expensive this way, which was a carryover from when Jim was here, and, you know, people may not realize, Jim, Jim, who was our assessor here for a few other years, he passed away kind of unexpectedly, and we went through four people right in a row, the state, two of them were really good, so the state, of course, hired him from us, and then the other one went back into private, now we have a new guy, but it's, it's still, uh, it's time to go back to the adjustment we planned four years ago, I think.
Good.
Uh, D, I believe, is the Bennington Rescue, which I just estimated an increase, I think the board needs to discuss where we're going to go with that.
Tony, you have any indication of, uh, what they're gonna ask for?
I think they're happy with what we have, what we're giving them, to the increase.
Yeah, uh, I got a call from, from Forrest last week, I haven't gotten back to him yet, who was like, they'd still like to reach that goal, but what can we do for him this year? So, uh, like I said, this is a placeholder, just to give us an idea, but I think this could be cut in half, and D more than, more than just, we're talking about an increase from, uh, 15,000 to 25,000 here for the rescue, I believe.
And, and that's built in to what you have here?
That's built in, that increase is built in here, just so we would have some, uh, line for it, let me just find it, wait a second. Yeah, emergency medical would go from 15,000 to 25,000, and that's a whopping increase from when we started just two years ago, 7,500.
I, I like the rationale based on the number of calls that...
Yeah.
Coming from Shastberry.
Yeah.
And I think that's, you know, that's justified.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it, 20, 25 isn't extraordinary for the service area Bennington has here, uh, because, uh, I know Sunderland now, we're somewhere around 24, something we pay to Arlington, uh, and, you know, it might be about similar populations, so, but it would be, where I backed off was when we got into the, let's do it strictly by this, and the same, because that was getting...
Right, right.
I mean, there has to be something on their end that, that reins things in, but, uh, 15 to 25, we've got the board, 20 this year, 25 next year, uh, I just did the 10, just a whole number there.
Yeah. You're forgetting that we pay Arlington the size of Little Mill.
Yes, we do, we pay, we pay Arlington, uh...
75.
That's community appropriation, we pay them 7,500, yeah.
Yeah, but still, it's taxpayers' money.
Well, they cover half a town, and that's, that's, uh...
But my, my point is, you kind of indicated that, uh...
Yeah.
That was for the whole town, and that's not quite true.
No, that, that isn't true, it's for the majority of town down this way, uh, and, yeah, you have to look at it that way, you're right, yeah, that there's two components in here, so...
Okay.
Whatever number the board wants, we can just plug it in here.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah. Then, uh, well, uh, the next one is coming up next in, uh, hit parade tonight, that's the, F is this estimate for the new, uh, cemetery mowing contract that one approval would have put, put out tonight. Uh, oh, I skipped E.
Right.
We're reducing, reducing the amount in the gravel budget significantly this year, because we're not using as much gravel, because we're addressing why the gravel doesn't stay on the road, which is, uh, the poor infrastructure that surrounds the actual road, the ditching, the trees, uh, we still have significant amount of gravel budget at $50,000. This year through, uh, fiscal 18, 19 so far, we've only spent 11,000 on the gravel budget. Uh, we'll use 25,000 depending on the mud season, but we probably don't need, we had gone up to close to 70, I believe, and I don't think we need that, I think we need to change our direction, and this is with, with Mike's, uh, planning here, and get into more of the, um, renting equipment that is more suited to what we need to do, and to move forward with, uh, recreating the ditches that are protecting the roads and keeping the roads from washing away and blowing away, and will help keep the crown on the road, and, um, we've talked about a number of piece of equipment, start cutting back more trees, uh, which all requires hiring people out, because some of them are, uh, we have greater heights working on a number of things now, but we'd like to increase it to renting the mowers again, and move in a pattern so that the mowing would be done, the ditching would be done, the seeding and the mulching would be done, it would just move in a, a progression through. Once we reestablish the ditches and what used to be the size of the roads, uh, you wouldn't have all this undercutting of the roads, and the water will actually have somewhere to go and keep the road surface dry. There'll still be projects where we put, you know, gravel down, but we just don't need that amount of money, you know, uh, and once we get things recreated, and, and the good thing about having, you know, Mike and, uh, he understands scheduling, he understands planning, he understands what needs to be done, and, uh, he has a vision for it, and he has a plan for it, so I think we, we go in that direction, and, uh, when we need gravel later on, it'll be fine. Not to mention, we have, uh, I think up to about $100,000 in grants to work on like nine different roads next year, which we will probably hire out the contractors, uh, to do a whole bunch of drainage projects, it's all with the municipal general road department, but, uh, we have grants from a whole bunch of people, and we'll probably do contracts with them so the road crew can continue with the basic infrastructure. Uh, and we have the $200,000 grant to do the, uh, bridge up in the hollow, which probably won't be done till the next year, but we have to start putting that out and everything. And I have another grant coming, I don't know when we're going to do that, because we have, we have a lot we need to do by June of next year, so we'll have contractors out for those, we'll be putting bids out for those as we move into January, and, uh, again, that way the road crew can keep moving on establishing the basics again, while we fight hash wars too, apparently, which are going to be a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, I don't really find G here, I don't remember what G is. Okay. Oh, G is the community appropriations, I just left those the same as last year, I've gotten probably 50% of them in, nothing's really changed so far, but, uh, you always get this rush, especially after the due date of December 1st, of people who forgot to put it in, or we wanted to put it in, and, uh, you know, if a group comes, unless we're going to the printer, I don't think I'm gonna say no, you know, it's up to the voters to say no's, but...
Right.
Uh, you know, as we get into January, it's really going to be too late to do anything about this.
Yeah, yeah, and again, that's kind of almost, you can almost, almost think of it as out of our control, that's, the voters decide whether or not they want to spend that money, so we're, we're assuming, you know, community appropriation stays the same, and this is what we estimate the budget will be next year, and if...
Yeah.
They come in and we put them on the ballot, if they go up, then we set the tax rate accordingly.
And H is, is the Class 3 Road Fund, which we've been funding at $40,000 a year, and I've left that for next year, and we will use that to, uh, rent a couple of specialty pieces of equipment that we need to, uh, move forward with the plans we have, and part of these equipment rentals is, uh, our long-term goal, right sizing and right equipping the fleet. Uh, I agree with Mike that we may not have the optimum equipment to do some of the jobs that's asked for, and, uh, we're going to evaluate that as we rent some newer equipment, or different types of equipment, uh, more versatile, smaller, greater, for one that can move along and ditch quicker, uh, there's a number of things that, that we're going to be looking at as we go along here, but, you know, this, if you look at this combined with, uh, a big part of the, uh, gravel budget, we're talking, you know, $75,000 to, to work along the roads like that, not including all the grants for like nine or 10 really bad spots we have now, so, well, we'll have a lot to do next year and, and a plan for doing it, so I'm, uh, looking forward to changing the roads a lot next year.
Yeah, good.
Uh, the next one is the Coal Hall, and this is a fund which we can get into in a minute, but, uh, uh, one of the things that, Coal Hall in the Hawkins Fund, which is, uh, at the discretion of the select board according to, to what I've read, uh, with a minimal balance of 80,000, but, uh, there's things that need to be done here as we transition to the new garage, that this money is, is sitting in this fund, and, um, the outside of this building needs to be worked on, need a vision for what this building in the exterior is going to be, do we need a new elevator, because we have this thing over here, there's just a, a number of questions that we can start addressing if we know that we have a funding source for, and, um, I did some research into this, and there's a number of times, back in 92, in today's dollar, the request was for 32,000, in 99, the request in today's dollar was $42,000, so it's not like this hasn't been done before. Uh, of course, the principal that they set to hold at 80,000 is not worth 80,000 either, but, uh, it's not like we would do things like this a lot, and it's, uh, it's the opportunity, it's actually the time, when the garage is knocked down and we sell it for scrap, uh, it's time to look at this, and how do you make this, uh, the exterior of this building look like, uh, you have a classic Vermont building here, it could look like a nice town hall from the outside, and that's if, if we can come to an agreement with this. The only other thing I want to take out, out of this Hawkins Fund is some minor improvements in, in it downstairs, uh, there's a storage system that the vault needs, because it's running out of space, that'll extend its life for years, and it's only 6,800, and digitizing maps in the vault, uh, which would really be great, and that's about $1,000, so, uh, because again, this is here at the discretion of those two things to take out of there.
Mm-hmm.
And road project, I think I've pretty much talked about that, but that's the whole list of things on the bottom there, Shastberry Hollow Road, Horton Hill Road, Ciderhill Road, Holy Smoke Road, West Mountain Road, uh, Colwood and Road inventory is ongoing through another grant, uh, and the Colwood Road Project, about 175,000, and so those, uh, the 60,000 turns into about 80,000 with, with our contribution, and we, we already have these grants, and there's others I'm waiting to hear about, so, and we'll be putting in another application for Class 2 road work, that'll be 175,000 for next year, uh, we don't get those every year, but if we get it, uh, I believe the tentative idea for Mike is to finish East Road from Reservoir, where it ended just south of Reservoir, to end the other way, and then we'll be completely done with East Road, you know, and that only took five years, but paving is expensive, we can only get 175,000 from the state, uh, and that's not guaranteed every year.
Now, don't drive that end of East Road a lot, but I do drive Buck Hill a lot, and there are some pretty bad spots on Buck Hill.
Yeah, Buck Hill, we, something fell apart, we had an agreement with, uh, a local company to do some work on that for us, uh, because it is breaking up, and that is not our long-term plan for fiscal '21, I believe, uh, because that road needs to be, we have it completely redone. It was, it, it may be, talking with, with Peckham, it may be, well, we can shimcoat it and buy some more time out of it, but I'm gonna leave that for Mike and, uh, his crew to look at and evaluate, because he had a patching thing we were going to do, but, uh, with all the paving work going on here, all the demand for everybody's time, people were just running out of things, uh, and we just couldn't get to it, but I know there was some nasty breakups on, on Buck Hill that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Which aren't going to be helped by the plowing season either, that's for sure. But from here, I'll talk to, because I haven't talked to a lot of the, I haven't talked to some, I should say, uh, the department heads to go over their, their ends of this, but, uh, administration, town clerk, treasurer, uh, we've talked to Joe at the fire department about his, we'll just go over a few things on that, but that's going to be more long-term planning for replacing the roof at Firehouse 1 over on Ald Depot Road, you can see it, it's, it's, it's over 30 years old, and they need a new roof, uh, so we'll try and put away from that, and we've been very successful replacing all the windows in the firehouses and upgrades, just, you know, by plan, having a plan so you don't run into a huge expense all the time, you know, we've done bits of windows one year and the following year, and, uh, we've almost replaced them all now. In fact, the last set, or, we bought at the discount a few months ago, they're sitting in the firehouse waiting to be installed in better weather, so, uh, and then I just have to talk to a few people, Chris included, for the planning board, and, uh, we will, uh, ask the department of heads in, in December, start of December 3rd probably, and, uh, then we can finalize this.
Good. Comments? Um, I am largely in agreement that this is a, a good spending plan, I like your idea of, um, using those funds that have gone unused for quite a while to get some things done that have needed to get done for quite a while, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute, so, if there's nothing else on the budget, we'll just go to the next item.
The mowing.
Cemetery mowing, good.
And that's just... And that's just simply asking the board for, I have to put out the bid. It's our regular bid, it'll be the same as it always has been, since we awarded for one year with an option for two more, with the addition this time of having Grandview Cemetery in it. So I do expect an increase, and obviously we're gonna have an increase in the cost of the bid over three years, but everything else pretty much stays the same. Just need to get it in the paper and have people come put in a bid for it.
Need a motion.
Oh, yeah, just a motion to put the bid out, you know.
Motion from Art to accept the RFP that Dave has written for the cemetery mowing.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that motion is agreed to by a vote of four zero zero. Reserve funds. We still have an action item to get legal opinion on those funds. We wanted to collect what information we could about those. Rob, our trustee of, Rob Stewart, our trustee of public funds, is here and can help us out. I did find one document that he sent me, I think, a year ago, that had a little summary of what, what the purpose of the funds were, which was really helpful when I sat down and going through this. Mainly, I think tonight, we're looking at cemetery funds, because we've got a lot of them, I believe five. I'm in favor of consolidating them just for simplicity, and I've made some suggestions on how to do that, but whether or not those suggestions are realistic will require our legal opinion. But we have just the cemetery fund, which gets listed along with things like the Class 3 Road Fund. And my understanding is that is just a real conservative bank account that has money that we spend regularly on, on the cemeteries. It doesn't have any restrictions, and it's not earning any real interest rate. So it's kinda like our active, active cemetery fund.
I have to bring this back to last year. The cemetery, this is a flaw in the cemetery fund. It was not set up correctly. So what we need to do, if you remember, we were in contact with VLCT and the attorneys, David Andier and that, we need to have another vote at a town meeting to approve this fund as either the cemetery trust, cemetery fund, that could be in our list of funds, or it would have to be a cemetery trust fund that would then go to the Board of Trustees. They recommended that we turn the money that we vote to have a trust fund and turn it over to the Board of Trustees, that cemetery trust fund, because of the flaw in the way it's been done. Because you remember, it started somewhere back in two thousand or something, and it was the idea that we're saving money for a fence. But in researching it last year before I went to the attorneys, there's no specific vote for any of it, and we've just been putting money in it. It came to the attention because I spent some of the money, because it's one of our normal funds, and then it was like, it's not designated anywhere. We've spent on the cemetery, but the opinion from Andier last year was that you do need to have a vote, that's be before anything is spent, we do need to have a vote by the people at town meeting, and he recommended that that vote be to put it in, it would be, I would move to put it in the perpetual trust fund.
Perpetual care fund?
Care, yeah, care trust fund, instead of the cemetery trust fund, which is the one that I see the problem with, because that is dedicated to two things we don't do anymore. So that one, I don't know how you go about, I don't mind getting ahead, but.
Yeah, so let's make sure we're talking about the right thing, because there are five of them. We got, I think we're talking about the cemetery fund, which shows up in Melanie's list every week
Yes.
Of funds, okay.
And that one.
And that is not to be confused with the cemetery trust fund
No.
Which is funds accruing net income used to acquire equipment needed for the care of cemeteries, or procurement of additional land, which is managed by the trustee of public funds. Now, Rob, what Dave was just saying, the thing that hung me up there was trust. Now, we were kinda thinking the word trust means a principle that you spend the income from. So, and right now, that we don't, I was thinking that was not what this fund is, and my recommendation would be not to make another trust fund, because we've got lots of money in trust funds. So I would look at this to be, however we fix it, and it sounds like we need to do something to fix it, but
Yeah.
I think we would fix it so that we can spend it, not so that we add to what is almost, what is several hundred thousand dollars in trust funds just for cemeteries right now.
Dave, what's the source of these funds?
The source of the cemetery fund was annual appropriations from the town. The idea was that we could address why this man of cemetery committee wants money now, that we would put these funds into the cemetery fund, that then when they want to clean heads under there, we could take that money out. It was separate, and it's allowed under a different section. Well, Steve, it's complicated.
This is perpetual fund, right?
It's like, you know, part of this conversation is
No, no, no.
Members of your committee have to sit down and what exactly are we gonna ask the attorneys, because we don't wanna be.
But this isn't, this isn't sourced through the sale of cemetery funds?
No.
No.
No, this was a budget item, which, because it's in Melanie's chart, I forget what we needed at the cemetery. So I said, oh, goodbye, just like I would spend out of any other fund, go buy it, because that's what we save the money for. And then when I started researching it, because I saw the cemetery trust fund, and it kinda struck me, I was like, well, now we have to amend this whole thing. And Carl, who's an attorney at VLCT, suggested that, not suggested, that we need to have another vote, and his suggestion was, don't, but we can get another opinion on that and or check with them again and see what it is.
Okay, well, one thing at a time. What I was gonna recommend is that this plain old cemetery fund, we, we fix it if we need to, but I didn't really need it to be fixed, but that we leave it a fund that is funded by annual appropriations, for example, move the money that we just got from Grandview into it, and then we have, my best estimate of today is a hundred and nine thousand dollars in that, that's all spendable.
The Grandview money is the Grandview Perpetual Care Fund. That has to go into our perpetual care fund.
Right. I don't, I don't think we've had that determined yet.
That was my impression from the attorneys at closing, that we could use the, like, we had, we had different funds, and we could use some. We can check that, that's a question, this is another question to put on the table for the attorneys, but
Yeah.
We should get an opinion, but that came directly from their perpetual care fund.
Okay, I'm gonna.
And that gets into the donor word again.
Okay, I'm pushing back on that just because we've got a lot of funds that are trust funds, and we've got a lot of money that's trust funds, and we've got this chunk of money, I would hope that we can spend the whole thing for things like a cemetery fence, rather than, you know, have three hundred and some odd thousand dollars in trusts just for cemeteries, which we're on the verge of doing if, if all this goes into trust.
But they're so restricted. That's the problem.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. Okay, so, and again, this is just me trying to be logical, but what I thought at the time was that those two could be combined just by motion of the Select Board, but we've gotta check the lawyer. So question number one, then, is lawyer for the Grandview money, how we, how we can spend that.
I think it's perpetual. I don't think you can touch that balance.
I don't think you can either.
See, I think it was money that the Grandview Cemetery Association gave to Shasbury when they dissolved, but we gotta look at the contract
Yeah.
That was, was signed then.
Because it's a legal binding thing, just like Rob has, that this was part of the North Brandonington Cemetery's perpetual trust fund. The trust fund is transferred to us, and the idea that it will be for what it was intended for.
Okay.
So just so you know, when we received that money, we put it into a separate account.
Right.
Because this question was still being raised, and we didn't have a great answer somewhere. When the determination is made, we can transfer it to another, which is leaving the separate fund.
Okay, okay. All right, the second one is, we've got a cemetery trust fund and a perpetual care fund. Cemetery trust fund says it can be used for equipment and land, and the perpetual care fund, it says it can be used to maintain the cemeteries under supervision of the Select Board. Those are both trust funds.
I think that's a misunderstanding. Only the income can be used.
Yes, yes.
And that's a description?
Yes, yeah, I, when I say trust, now I'm meaning that we can only use the income. Correct, yeah. And I don't know, can a trust fund ever be changed, or is it like that forever?
That's good.
Yeah, so that's a question I would have, and, because to me, I would like to combine those two, just because having a fund that can only be used for equipment and land and another one that's used for everything to fix up the cemeteries, to me, they're cemetery funds. Let's, let's put them together and use them to maintain the cemeteries.
But again, I think it depends on what the source was, and not depending on what the source is.
Right. So I think, lawyer, question number two is, can we combine the cemetery trust and the perpetual care? And stop me if you don't think this is the right way to do this, but assuming that we do get a lawyer that says you can do that, I'm presuming that that would require a vote of the people. It would have to go on the ballot to change, you know, move one trust fund into one other. And then there is the Huntington Fund, which has got fifty-six K. And, okay, income from the Huntington Fund can be used for maintaining the stones of the Calvin Huntington family. So that one, we can't do anything with that.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that one stays the way it is, but, you know, let's just make sure we're doing that, because we've got fifty-six K.
We just spent it. We just spent some of the interest doing, doing the two stones.
Okay.
We just spent three thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. The GW Hawkins Fund, which has got, I think, around a hundred and forty-eight K in it, there's currently a Select Board decided eighty K principal reserve in that. That still leaves sixty-eight thousand, which is a good chunk of money to do things to improve Coal Hall, and we can do that. And then there's a health fund, which I think is an orphan fund of some type
Yeah.
That's got thirty thousand dollars in it, which I think we should ask the voters if we can move that into the general revenue and offset this year's tax increase.
Yeah, whatever, whatever purpose, because, I mean, I went back, the documents I can find here, referencing back to nineteen eighty-seven, they state clearly that the last known account of this was that general descriptions were used for the health, and it hadn't been used for years. And it said, a researcher had looked into this years beforehand, so we're talking somewhere in the early eighties or late seventies, and couldn't find the origin of the health fund. So it's been sitting dormant for like thirty years, so however you dissolve a trust, I think this is one that could go, because there's no use. And there was some, somebody they used to give money to, but back in eighty-seven, they were saying how it doesn't exist anymore, it was recommended there to dissolve it, and...
I have tons of documentation that I think was in two thousand, the old works, as it colored. There were some recommendations made to the board at that point, to establish a panel of individuals to, right? Decide how it should be used for another.
I tried to look for the panels before, and could not find that either. So I don't know if that was ever convened to, because I read that one too, and can't find any report of what they're doing. In any event, none of it was done, apparently, so.
And that's what we're sitting.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever received a request for, for any of those funds.
Yeah. The stuff in eighty-seven was referring to some program that used to exist around here. You know, there used to be poor funds in towns too, where people would just apply and send money out, but this hasn't been active or done anything for, we're going on several decades now, so, you know, I agree, if we dissolve that, and wherever it goes, it's up to the board, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if someone has an idea of something maybe health-related that the town should take on as a, as a project, but I'm thinking this was a good idea, and it didn't go anywhere, let's just use the money.
Used to be a town farm. Towns used to have a farm that were, where people would go. Town Line Road is a good example of that, it used to be the town farm.
The town farm?
Town Farm.
Where was the Shasbury town farm? Where was the Shasbury town farm?
I think it was.
On Town, Town Line Road.
Town Line Road.
Yeah, the same one we're getting.
Yep.
And what, what was the town farm?
My understanding is the town actually maintained a farm where, where things could be raised and supplied to people that couldn't afford things like that.
Transits would stay there.
Transits would stay there.
So kinda like the community garden idea in the city?
Exactly.
More like a poor house.
Yeah, the poor farm.
Poor farm. This is, this is our indigenous population ended up there. People dreaded it.
Right.
The overseer of the poor was abolished in nineteen seventy-two. Replaced by a social welfare agency.
Okay, okay. Like I say, my first idea was just move it into general revenue, but, you know, we could, you know, if we thought there was something worthy to do with it, but it sounds like it was just money from general revenue that was put into an account for a purpose that didn't get used.
Well, this gets back to a word that frequently appears in the things that Rob looks at too, of donor, and protecting the interests of the donor. This is another legal question, that we're gonna have to take the attorney, and I can provide the, either one's the two or four, we can get together and provide the documents. It's important to send as much as we can to the attorney, so we're not wasting money here. And a simple question would be, this is all the documents the town has, this fund has been enacted for thirty years, can we dissolve this trust? And how do we do it? And if, you know, if it costs a couple of thousand in legal fees, we're still going to get the benefit of the other thirty thousand that is just sitting there. You know, and we can ask the same question, this, it is the same question as the cemetery trust, but the cemetery trust, we may find there are some donors, because I went through the old books, and you can clearly find people who are donors to the perpetual care fund. So that, that has to be deserved, because you're never gonna figure out who was a donor and who was getting fees now, but it's interesting, there are people listed back in their thirties who donate, donors to the perpetual care fund.
I don't remember that town fund, do you, Ken?
No, I don't.
No, you're right.
Okay, any more comments on that? So there we've got a list of things to ask the lawyer, and Rob and Dave, whatever you can collect, that's what the lawyer's gonna have to decide these questions on, Dr. Sam, so.
Yeah, get together some paperwork, we can ship them back and forth to us, and...
Yeah, I've got a folder, a couple folders full of documents that I inherited.
I would love to look through.
I've been going through them to identify some things.
Yeah, I've been looking in the vault for different things, and...
The problem is, is many of them are just marked as notes, and...
Yeah. There's a whole journal in the vault of just handwritten things about the cemeteries for years, and, you know, you see where things begin, but you don't see what was the beginning. Like, okay, here's an entry for this, but what preceded this? Why? Why is this entry here? Maybe that was recorded in a different book, who knows?
Okay. All right, if we're done with that, we move on. All right, if we're done with that, we move on. Ken Harrington wanted to bring up an idea of his regarding expanding the roadside commercial zone. He is not here. I asked the planning commission to stick around for that, but I don't really feel it's fair to Ken to let them weigh in, if he's not here, to weigh in himself. So I'm going to just postpone that without objection until the next time, and move on to other business, if Dave has any.
We do have some tonight. I have errors in admissions that we see from the listeners today, an issue with the property.
Listeners would like to correct and amend the property valuation of Rick Bolhardy. Proper ID, Bartholdy. Mr. Bartholdy had grieved his assessment in July by letter, but was unable to make the hearing date he was assigned. He purchased the house in July twenty seventeen for twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the town had assessed it for two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred. The town assessor inspected the property and a review of the sales in Shasbury of similar properties, along with the bank appraisal at the time of purchase, port a reduction in the assessment to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay, so the, the listeners are saying we mistakenly listed this at two ninety-eight, and we should list it at two thirty-five. Is there a motion to accept this correction?
Some.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Joe, discussion?
What does, does this mean he gets a rebate on this year's taxes, or is this going forward?
I don't know the answer to that.
Doesn't specify on there either.
I don't know either, but we would have to calculate it if there was an error, and he would get a rebate if he was charged a higher rate.
I think so. Doesn't make any difference, I mean, I agree, but I just, I'm just curious as to.
Oh, okay.
What that means. I mean, I'm not, that doesn't change my vote.
Okay.
This is the, this is the wish of the listeners that we're going to go with.
Okay, okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the error in Mr. Bartholdy's tack, Mr. Bartholdy's valuation, the correction is agreed to. So he will be assessed at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Do I sign this?
As long as you take a vote, you don't have to sign it.
Is this by Board of Civil Authority, or is that something different?
That's something different.
Okay.
This is just an error made by the listeners.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Board of Civil Authorities, if the listeners don't think they made a mistake.
Yes, okay, yep.
The last item I have is window replacement for Station One. We've already built, purchased the windows, this is for the actual replacement of all these windows. Joe Battickin submitted this to me the other day. They received three bids, one from Ed Scholl Construction for eighty-eight hundred, one from Brett Wohl, I believe that's Wohl Construction, for ninety-four hundred, and one from Facto Construction for ninety-four hundred. And Joe recommends that the board approve the contract to Ed Scholl Construction for eighty-eight hundred dollars to do the work of the firehouse.
Some moved.
Seconded by Tony, seconded by Art, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is all part of the budget.
It's all part of the budget, yeah, it's all what we've been planning on, rebuilding the firehouses.
Yeah, he's a fireman, he'll do it right. He's going to have all those guys to deal with, yeah.
And that is the end of what I have.
Okay.
What was the thing that was sent around about the parent rec, is that in the, are you putting that in the budget?
That was, yeah, that, we skipped over that, how did we skip over that?
Oh, right.
Sorry, what?
The.
Oh, yeah, that was supposed to be part of the budget. Yeah, the parent recreation is asking for fifteen hundred dollars from us for playground at Perrin Lake. And all we have to do is just put it in budget, so. Without, without objection, we'll instruct.
Where are the budget, are we going to put that? Because they are not part of our budget. What they're asking for is similar to the donation we made to the.
To the, to the pavilion.
To the pavilion.
How did we do that?
Did we, we voted right off the board to do that out of the general fund.
We did what?
Voted right off from the board to do that. We made, the board made a motion to do it, and they don't want this part of their community appropriation. Because they're asking North Bennington for an additional fund, and they're asking us for an additional fund.
Hold on, fifteen thousand?
Oh, fifteen hundred from us.
Oh, okay, fifteen, that's part of the thought, but I said fifteen thousand.
All right, oh wait, yeah, would you be able to commit fifteen hundred as well? Well, I mean, I assumed it would be, you're saying we write a check for it now, I'm saying we put it in the twenty, twenty twenty budget. I'm.
Well, I can probably find someplace, just off the top of my head, because we don't have any, we don't have a budget line for parents.
Yeah, but if you put it in a budget, you can't write the check until.
We can't write the check until July first.
So, so I think it's, I think we got to take it out of this, I think we just got to write a check for it, I'd find it out of our.
Let's see what's there, let's see if I can.
See, I presume that they were asking us this now, because they're nowhere in budget season, and they're looking for us to make an appropriation. They'll, they'll do better if that's their intention than trying to get all the surrounding communities to supply unbudgeted money.
It is somewhat unusual to try and do it this way. Because it really should be an increase in their community appropriation request. Because it isn't like building the pavilion, which was a one-off, that was a big donation. But this is more an incremental thing, and we can't create a budget line, because it's not even part of the town.
Do we, I can't remember all thirty of them, we have a parent recreation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Community appropriation.
Yeah, every year they have one.
Oh, well, let's just increase their, add to their.
Okay, well, I can own, that's what we want to do, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, without objection, we'll add fifteen hundred dollars to their community appropriation. Sound good?
Sounds great. I hope we just make it just a one-time thing, that we don't repeat it year after year.
Yeah. Well, at some point, they'll get voted down, then, if they do it year after year.
Oh, no.
It's a one-time, one-time.
Okay, I'll make an action item to remember next year.
Build a trust fund.
Certainly, there's a lot of people with this.
Okay, reviewing our action items, going back, we were hoping to get a wish list from the cemetery committee. I presume we'll get that itemized wish list when they appear before us.
Yeah, I just love that they kind of took up the time for.
And then legal questions about cemeteries, and we'll get to that. Melanie is going to look into putting a statement that says you can pay through municipal online onto the tax bill, so that people like me will see it. And then she was indicating that she just has an action to get a special warrant for refunds.
Did you understand that she really didn't want to wait till next meeting, that if she got it generated ahead of time?
We'll have to have a special meeting.
Do you have to have a special meeting, or can three people just stop in and sign?
No, we have to.
I think that's what she wanted, was three people to stop and sign.
Yeah, but it has to be announced like I would if we had a pressing issue.
Right.
But I thought her goal was to get it done for Christmas, which was her goal last year, and we have two meetings before Christmas.
Yeah, she was hoping to get it, well, she was, her intent was to get it signed next week, if possible. And I, you know, because I said, well, if Joe can finish it, it's only another week to the meeting, but we could ask for a special meeting and see if someone, three of you could be around, you know, at eight in the morning to do it, or just wait till the following Monday.
That, that we can do, if he gets it done earlier, and doesn't want to wait until December third.
She was under the impression you just would stop in and sign it, and that can't happen that way.
No, that might have been from the way I phrased it, or, well, I didn't want to get three people to stop in and sign it, but it has to be.
No, it's got to be.
We got to have a meeting.
I understand.
So, yeah, if she wants to do that, or let us know, I would rather do it on December third, though.
Okay.
So Dave is going to talk to Rob Bailey, or whoever at V Trans, and see what kind of contract we can negotiate, or at least get us a ballpark for what kind of thing, because.
Figure out what's on the table.
What, what they would want to give us in exchange for plowing Glass, uh, Glasson Berry Road.
Ten buckets of sand.
A new truck, was my goal.
Isn't it? Ten buckets of sand, that's what they.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're probably going to say.
They'll say, where's the sand?
We'll give you that sand that you never gave us. Lawyer questions about cemeteries. How can we spend the Grandview money? Is it actually have to go into a trust, or can we spend the principal? Can we combine the cemetery trust and the cemetery perpetual care funds? And can we dissolve the health fund? So those are all our lawyer questions. So we need to warn a hearing for the bylaws on December seventeenth.
Yeah, that has to be invited by the twentieth of November, that's when it has to be out. Sean and I have already discussed moving on from here to get everything posted.
Okay, so that's, that's like day after tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's the twentieth.
Oh, that is tomorrow, yeah. It has to happen by tomorrow.
The twentieth. Did I say the twentieth? Sorry, did I say the twentieth?
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah, it's like fifteen days.
I just get nervous there physically, I was like, wait.
You were going to get businesses to sign on to that letter?
Yeah, I'm going to get businesses to sign on to the letter supporting the grant to V D C P. And Dave was going to parent notice, oh, the notice on the environmental thing, you're going to make those changes and submit that.
Yeah, and what I'll do is I'll say, you know, the board vote, this is the wording, you know, take it or go away. Because we're never going to meet the deadlines unless they accept it the way it is.
Right.
So I don't see any harm to them in accepting the change of the wording, so.
Yeah.
I'll let you know tomorrow, because I'll send it to them first thing in the morning.
Yeah, and, you know, if you, yeah, send it, assuming, you know, assuming that they'll take our, take the corrections. I think that's entirely reasonable, that we're not puppets, yeah.
Oh, and I, if the board doesn't object, they, they had intended to do the postings and the letters to all the people who were at the meetings, which I didn't know, because I wasn't going to do it. But I told them, well, I was just going to bill you for all the time anyway. They were like, well, we were just going to bill Shires for all the time anyway, so I think I'll just have them do the, do the ads and everything, and the mailings, do everybody.
Yeah, you got plenty to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then somehow we got to remember that the fifteen hundred dollars that we're adding to the parent C A this year is for this year only, so I'll put it on my Google Calendar. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
By Art, seconded by Tony, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.